Nancy Lee, can you hear me? All right, we'll move on and come back to Eric.
Good morning, everyone. Bonjour. My name is Eric Chu. I'm the head of the French American School of Puget Sound on Mercer Island. This is my 11th year as head of school. I am also trustee at the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know if it's two or three years, but 2020 was so long that maybe it's three years. It would plan for two years at least. So one positive thing that I would say, very positive thing, is how much, I mean, not that we were skeptical about it, but how much we realized that education is crucial in our world, in our society, and how our community got together and supported us. And so that's something that is very moving to me and that I appreciate a lot. So I'm glad to be here with you and to talk about the education of Irish students are our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred?
Good morning. My name is Fred Rundell. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services with the school district and happy to be at this linkage meeting. It's always fun to hear from our community partners, you know, whether or not, you know, we're connected each and every day, you know, in a very tangible way. I know that our connection in our community is so important to our students. So thanks for being here. I was reading over some things that Harry Brown, one of our YFS counselors, had put together for IMS the other day. And there was a graphic that he had in here, and it said that hope plus connection plus purpose plus adaptability and flexibility equals resilience. And so thinking a little bit about what Deborah had mentioned around our ability to remain resilient. I think we're tested in all four of those domains, but, you know, we've continued to remain nimble and try to stick to our purpose. And that's what's been meaningful for me.
Thank you. Judy?
Get myself unmuted. Well, thank you for inviting us. This is always an interesting time to get a chance to talk to the school board. I am the current president of the Rotary, and I have a few members that have joined us. But I think what I have been in all the years that I've been on the island, I've worked with the chamber, and I've worked with the school district with my children. And now in this job, we're working on some interesting ways to connect. Donna Kowalski helps us do a student of the month at Rotary. We have two students, a boy and a girl. And the members really appreciate that. We have an interact club, which is a Rotary club for high schoolers. And Mark Wishman is working with this high school in that capacity. And in case you haven't heard, Wally Bose, who is a member of Rotary, is working on doing a scholarship from Rotary for students. And he wants it to be sizable, and he's been working on it for a year or two, but I'm sure you will hear more about that later.
Thank you. Donna?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. I am superintendent Donna Kowalski in my fourth year here in the district. And just always so grateful for all of our partners, especially the community service groups that are so responsive to our students in Mercer Island School District. Positive would be just the resilience that we've seen, certainly in everyone, but in particular our students. We've had to pivot several times in the past almost a year, and our students have really been able to pivot and make the best of what sometimes is a very trying and difficult situation. So kudos to all of our staff who are also pivoting and learning as we go. They're being wonderful role models for our students to show them that we are all lifelong learners. From day one, I've come into the district, have called myself the lead learner because we all have to continue to learn. And I think this pandemic, if nothing else, has shone a light on learning new things for all of us. So I see that as a real positive.
Thank you. Ty?
I'm Ty Bergstrom. I'm the Executive Director of Finance and Operations for the district. This is my fifth year in the district. And thinking about positives, I think a good, I think a good thing that has, I have learned and observed so far is perspective. And really figuring out what is, what's essential in life, what's essential in learning, what's essential in service and in our communities and our families, and really trying to focus on that. You know, being distant from everybody has really caused us to think more about how we communicate. What are we communicating? How are we meeting? And those type of things. And so I think perspective, I've gained a lot of perspective this year, so.
Thank you. Carol?
There we go. Hi, I'm Carol Mahoney. I am president of the Mercer Island Kiwanis Club. This is my third year of being president. We sponsor the Mercer Island High School Key Club. And amazingly, or not so surprisingly, the Key Clubbers have been absolutely totally resilient. They didn't miss a beat. They continue to meet online. And their president, Clara Yabis, is just outstanding. So we're very pleased to have her this year. She isn't thrown by anything technologically that goes bad, goes wrong. She just sits there and figures it out. And the Key Clubbers had an article in the Mercer Island Reporter about their project, their clothing drive for an organization called Mama's Hands. So some of you might have seen that article. So they're continuing to do service projects even during a pandemic, which is totally amazing. And we do give scholarships every single year to deserving Key Clubbers that demonstrate leader, excellent leadership skills to help them further their careers in whatever chosen field they have selected. This year has been challenging for our club because we have an elderly group, it's longtime members, that will not do technology, they won't meet on Zoom. So for a while, we were having outdoor socially distanced meetings, wearing masks at El Joya. I think a lot of you know where that is, in the courtyard there. And then one of our members got COVID, so we had to discontinue that. And the rest of the group, membership, are more younger working people. So we've been meeting on Zoom with that group. So it's been a challenge, you know, to try to keep everybody informed of what's going on. So that's been our challenge this year, but so far we've been able to manage pretty well. So that's basically Kiwanis focuses on children, improving the lives of children, one child, one community at a time. So that's who we are.
Thank you. Maggie Ty?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. And I also wanted to say apologies for being late. It looks like we lost power here last night for a while, and our Wi-Fi is still down. So I'm talking to you via my phone. I just wanted to say thank you for everything that all your organizations have done this year, keeping the community tied together and supporting what we're trying to do in the schools. And just, I've never been happier to live on Mercer Island than this year. It's been, for all that it's been a very difficult year, it's been great to see how the community has come together and sort of intergenerally, intergenerationally as well. So thank you.
Fatma?
Sorry, I always do that. And again, I also apologize for being late. I was actually ready at 8:30, but my computer wasn't. So, and I'm hiding in my room because my boys are taking finals in the other room. I'm proof positive of all of the chaos involved with having four kids in the school district during chaos. And we've survived, and we're doing just fine. And this is my fifth year, fourth year on the board for the Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce, and my, probably my fifth or maybe sixth year, fifth year for the Mercer Island Schools Foundation Board. And I, you know, moved here about six years ago from the East Coast and quickly got involved in this community. I do like my dual roles with the Chamber and with the Schools Foundation and its meetings like this that kind of bring it all together for me annually and make me, you know, encouraged to do it one more year. So I keep doing it. I have, I'm a litigator. I've mostly done plaintiff's work all my life and recently transitioned to doing real estate work at Engle and Volkers on Mercer Island. I'm a member of the Goddessman Chapin Group, so I work with Dan Goddessman and Sam Chapin. And we do real estate work mainly on Mercer Island, but I've, you know, been kind of all over, and I've been at that for about a year. And so I also represent Engle and Volkers on this call. And we have, you know, we've been talking about now that things are hopefully taking a turn for the positive and maybe taking on a student intern this summer, doing some marketing with our organization. So there's some really cool, interesting opportunities there, too. And that's something we can talk about as we move forward. But in any way, we can keep our students engaged and give them real world experience before they get out there. I'm all for it, and I'm here to help in any way I can. So.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Nancy, let's try again.
Okay. I just said bye. Yeah. Happy New Year.
Did you call on Nancy?
Yes, I did.
And I apologize, it says Terry, but my Comcast has been horrible, so his works better for some reason. Okay, so I'm Nancy Lee. I lived here on the island for 44 years. And my kids and two of my grandkids went through the school district. So I feel very, very connected and very proud of what the school district has done. And I, as a Rotary member and on the board, I really love the monthly students of the month. It's so refreshing and it's so inspiring, makes us all smile and makes us all feel hopeful for the future. And I also serve on the truancy board, which I enjoy doing, and also Youth and Family Services. And I guess I think that's about it. I work part-time doing social marketing campaigns, which is one of the reasons that I get involved with the school district. Social marketing isn't social media. Many people think it is. It's behavior change for social good. So it deals with everything from public health to injury prevention to environmental behaviors that make it a better world. And I teach that part-time, one quarter a year at the UW. Is there, I may have missed any other agenda items.
That was it.
Okay.
Production, thank you so much.
You bet.
Craig?
Hi, I'm Craig Deggenture. You all know me in my day job here as the communications coordinator for the Mercer Island School District. But this morning, I'm representing, I'm a board member with Carol in the Mercer Island Kiwanis Club. Carol kind of gave an overview of our club, but we just celebrated our 60th anniversary. The Mercer Island Kiwanis Club was chartered in 1960, the same time that the city of Mercer Island was incorporated. So that's interesting. A great positive for me is every Tuesday afternoon, I get to spend an hour with this wonderful group of Mercer Island High School Key Clubbers. There's usually about 35 of us. Carol's usually there. And I helped the club with Laura Totten is the advisor, the photography and arts teacher. And as Carol said, they're just a wonderful group of young people, so positive and doing all this great work during a very difficult time. So thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. And Flo? Oh, you're on mute.
I'm Flo Chambers. I've lived on Mercer Island for 46 years. And now I'm probably going to sell my house and move to Covenant Shores at some point. My children, I have two children who attended Mercer Island High School. And my son, Peter, was on the football team, and he really liked being that. So, and my daughter is living with me and her husband. And she works outside of the house. I've been a member of Rotary for 11 years, and for the last five years, I've served on the Board of Directors as Club Support Director. Right now, because this, we're doing Zoom, I haven't had a lot to do because I said that when I'm club supporter and we're meeting at the community center, that I had a lot to do. Anyway, I'm hoping we get back there soon. So I appreciate being invited to your meeting, and I think you all do such great work. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. I think one of the things that we've really been missing in the last year is just obviously connection to each other. So thank you for taking the time to give us updates on what's happening in the community because we know that there are lots. It's just harder to figure out what. So I think we are starting with an update from the district. Is that, I'm kind of looking towards Donna?
Certainly, we can do a little bit of an update and take questions. We don't have a slide deck prepared, so to speak, but I will ask Fred or Craig if they wouldn't mind putting a link for those who are here to all of the information on our website for our reopening. For all of those of you who are here, if you have children in the schools, hopefully you've been reading the messaging and following us as we have been on this adventure of bringing our students back to in-person learning. It's been, it's been a long time coming. We closed schools on March 13th in 2020 and had what we kind of call crisis remote learning, where we had to pivot very quickly into all of our students, K through 12, into remote learning. And started planning almost immediately, thinking we would be back before the end of the school year. And of course, that didn't occur. So then our planning had to shift to the new school year, and we started building our plans for the fall. And part of that planning process was all aligned with the Department of Health as well as King County Public Health, which has guided us all through our planning. And one of the mandates from them is to focus on specific groups of students, one group being our most impacted learners, so students who really struggle in the remote setting. A lot of our students with, students with disabilities. And so those students were actually brought back initially in September, even though the rest of our students did remain remote. We also planned in August, before school started, to, we configure our staffing so that our youngest learners, our kindergartners and our first graders would be able to come back in a full setting. We had to adjust staffing to do that because there are, as someone referenced earlier, social distancing requirements. And for us, it's the six foot, which really limits how many students we can have in a class. So it's about 15. So we had to adjust our staffing for that. We had some original dates of attempting to bring our kindergartners in. We had to push them as the pandemic really. People ask me, you know, what's driving your decisions? And my response is almost always starts with the pandemic because the numbers, when they were spiking in the fall, really were what was driving our decisions because we had a decision tree that said if the numbers were in this range, we couldn't bring students in. That decision tree was modified in December. And so we've been able to move forward with reopening. And we were thrilled after our winter break on January 6, I think it was, to bring our kindergartners back. And two weeks after that, on January 19th, our first graders came back. So our first graders have been in for a week. Our kindergartners are now in week three. And we have extended our plan, following the guidance from the Department of Health, to phase in students to make sure that we are limiting transmission. And we can show that any transmission of disease is not occurring within the school. And in fact, we even have a dashboard on our website to show the COVID cases that have occurred. Because we're not going to say that they won't occur, but we can, at this point, proudly say, we have not had any transmissions within our schools. We've had employees and students who have contracted COVID, but they have been through community transmission. And so we have contact tracing all in place so that if someone does come forward with a positive COVID test, our team jumps into action and begins the contact tracing right away, works very closely with King County Public Health as to is it a, it in school transmission or is it a community transmission, and does the notification for anyone who may be impacted. Our next group to come in, we're going to be phasing in, again, working through our youngest learners. That's exactly in alignment with what the Department of Health has recommended. So of course, next coming will be our second and third graders. And then a couple of weeks following them will be the fourth and fifth grade. And if all the numbers stay in what's the moderate range on the toolkit that Department of Health has published for school districts, we will then be able to start bringing in our middle schoolers. And that timeline, as you can imagine, if we're, you know, doing two weeks, it's early March before our middle schoolers will be able to start having some in person. We haven't been able to adjust the staffing for all the classes. So our second through 12th graders will have what's called a hybrid model, where they will get two days a week. Some of our second through fifth, our second through fifth graders can get two or three days, depending on the week, in person. And then they'll have synchronous learning via streaming Zoom. On the other day, our middle school and high school will have a hybrid model where the students will have two days a week in person, two days a week streaming, and one day a week that will be completely synchronous for all the students. So the class will be all together on that one day a week. So our hope is, again, if all the numbers stay in that moderate range and do continue to drop for high school, which we know is the higher risk of the environment. Schools are a low risk across the board, and we've had that verified repeatedly by Department of Health. But the students who are most like adults, which are teenagers, do have a higher risk than our youngest students, partly because it's harder to cohort them. You all have memories of high school and hallways and lunchtimes. And we have almost 1,500 kids at the high school. So even cutting them in half and only having 50% of them there, we still have 750 kids that are in our classes on a daily basis. At the middle school, it's going to be about 500. So we do have to be very cognizant of phasing our students in carefully. Make sure that we've got all of the protective equipment in place, which we do. If you follow us on social media at all, you'll see lots of pictures of our youngest learners sitting six feet apart, wearing masks, even on the playground. Social distance play is occurring. The kids are doing a fabulous job. Our kindergarten and first grade teachers are amazing and have just, we talk about the joy that we see on the kids' faces, even though they're covered with a mask. You can still tell how thrilled our five and six-year-olds are just to see each other. Yes, they have to stay six feet apart, but they're certainly thrilled to see each other. We work really closely with Youth and Family Services, and we know that they've been tracking some data on the mental health of our students and the impacts that this quarantine has created for certainly our students, but all students across the nation, frankly. And we know that that is some of the recovery process, that we are really going to have to focus some energy, time and funds to help our students recover from this time of not being in a social environment. As we watched our kindergartners, they seem to be rebounding fairly, fairly quickly. But as with all mental health concerns, sometimes we don't see them pop up right away. We are especially concerned for our middle schools and our adolescents. You might have read about King County Public Health, talking about the crisis for mental health for particular adolescents because of the isolation. And so we are super cognizant of that. And part of the rationale of moving forward with our reopening plan is because of making sure that we are taking care of the whole child. That is one of the board's value statements.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? I see Lori's hand. Go ahead.
No question. I was just rubbing my hands together.
Oh, all right. Anyone have any questions on anything that Donna has presented? I have, well, I have a question to ask you. Eric, I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, but I know that French American School has had many more students in then, well, or at least percentage-wise, than Mercer Island School District. And I'm wondering if you could share any lessons learned for all of us.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Diva, for asking me that. So first of all, I would like to start by saying that I sympathize with all school districts and public schools in general that couldn't open. I mean, obviously, as you said, so we have a lower number of students. So, and we are independent schools, so it's easier for us to make our own decision. I would say that, when I say our own decision, obviously doesn't mean that we live in isolation and that we don't look at what is happening around us. And these numbers in our community are very concerning to all of us as well, obviously. So I would say that it's, it's not easy. It's definitely not easy to have on-campus learning because of all the sanitary measures that we need to put in place. So some of them that we realized quite early were very necessary was, for example, the surveillance testing program that we implemented. So just like today, so every Wednesday, so we have all our students bringing back samples of saliva that we hand out to them the day before, and it's done at home. So the parents draw that sample, and so they give it back to us on Thursday, and then we get results every Saturday to see if we have any positive cases. We've had very few. I would say that since September, because we've been open since the beginning, since September, gradually, we didn't have everyone, all the grades on campus right at the beginning. We started with preschool, then like one week in September, we had kindergarten and so on. By the October 12th, we had all grades from our tiny white pre-k to two-year-old through grade eight. And so, as I said, we had very few cases. I think that we had maybe three. But like Donna said, it was not like any, there was no spread at all on our campus because we could detect them thanks to our testing program. And so because of all the other measures that we've been taking, so there was no spread at all. So it was isolated, and so we asked the entire court to quarantine. So I mean, all the measures is, to be honest, me and my team, we are spending like most of our day working on sanitary measures, making sure that we are on top of things regarding health and safety. So it's definitely not easy. And I, you know, I'm so thankful and grateful to see that public schools can do it now slowly and gradually. And I know, Donna, I share all the, you know, what you said earlier, that's very difficult. So hopefully, the situation will. So hopefully, the situation will be better soon with the, you know, the vaccine rollout, everybody wearing masks and taking all the measures necessary to get our students back to school. Because as you said, Donna, it is making a huge difference. Not only for students, obviously, but for us as well as educators. I mean, we, some some of our teachers say, and I'm sure they say the same way, that that's not the job that they sign up for, you know, teaching from home, because you are missing the connection. That's so crucial. So I really appreciate the work you do as as the board to to support, you know, our schools. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you so much. The board, in addition to COVID issues, has been, while working on and completing other projects. This recently, the board approved a long range facilities master plan involving, I think we had representatives, at least from some of the groups here today on the Community Committee. And I'm just hoping, David, you would be willing to give us just kind of a brief summary of the work that we did. And then, you know, how just just the work we did and and where we got to.
Sure. Thank you very much, Deborah.
Thank you.
I'll just talk real briefly about the Long Range Facilities Master Plan. So in our district, we've got six school buildings, the administration building, the Crest Pool, sorry, the Crest Building and the Pool. Most of these were built in the 1950s, some were remodeled in the 1990s. It's it's about a $500 million to a billion dollar investment that the district has in facilities. So it's pretty significant. In 2014, we passed a $98.8 million bond that allowed us to build Northwood Elementary School and rebuild part of the middle school and expand the high school on time and on budget. We also have an investment of about $38 million every six years through our technology and capital projects levy. So there's a significant investment going on that continues to maintain and build our infrastructure. In 2022, we will have, early in 2022, we'll have a renewal of all these levies that needs to happen again. So there's there's a lot ahead of us. So to be able to manage and plan and keep these buildings working for the foreseeable future, the board determined we needed a long term facilities plan, which will help us determine how we complete the rest of the buildings to renew them as well as how we manage future capital project levies. We hired professionals, Maelum architects, to do this for us. We spent about 16 months working with the district, the community and the school board to create these plans. We evaluated numerous ways of renewing our buildings and infrastructure. And then we came to conclusions in about a 60 page document that tells us basically what order we will be updating the buildings and which ones we will be updating first and later on. Throughout time, whenever we decide to do this, it just gives us a plan for the order these buildings will be renewed, rebuilt, remodeled as the the groups decided. And this is published on our website. Now I'll put the link in our chat. So this allows us to more effectively spend our capital projects levy as well as prepare us for future bonds that we can vet with the community along with the multitude of solutions that we looked at. So I'll I'll put the link in. That's that's about it. It's it's been a very important project to manage these assets. And we've had a great deal of help from the community, the school district, and actually, multiple boards have vetted this plan. So it's it stood stood the test of time over the past 16 months. Thank you.
And I think we could add that it's it stood the test of the pandemic as well because we started prior to, and actually, the committee was very gracious and completed the work virtually in some Zoom meetings, because that's why the the schedule had to be extended a little bit due to the pandemic and not being able to meet in person. But they persevered and did amazing work, even in this virtual setting.
Anyone have any questions regarding the Long Range Facilities Master Plan? Well, we definitely want to thank the organizations that provided community members to our to our community team in making recommendations. If you go to the site or the plan and or our district website, it it gives a lot of information on on the the progress that the that the community, that the group made in terms of researching issues and having really important conversations about community priorities and in making those difficult decisions, obviously, under with the with the underlying fiscal restrictions that we have also. So thank you all for participation in that. The I'm gonna give it to Brian, if you would please give, talk to us about what the board's legislative priorities are for the year.
Thank you. So each year, the board reorganizes and selects officers to represent the board over the next year. There's president and vice president and then legislative representative. This is the third time I've served as the board's legislative representative. My key job is to coordinate with the Washington State School Directors Association in General Assembly in selecting that organization's legislative priorities for a year. Unlike other school director associations, ours is actually named in law in Washington State. Washington and New Jersey are the only two states where our associations are government agencies, which is really interesting and powerful. So each year, we set down our legislative priorities and those run up to the General Assembly as a process, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with. This year, WASD is selected for its overarching priorities, three focus areas of advancing vital programs and services, expanding access to equitable instruction and secure staff and district resources. How that filters down to the Mercer Island School District in our top priorities here were comprehensive school safety, which is a new legislative position that was passed a few years ago. Mercer Island School District was a signatory on that legislative position. And it includes an all hazards approach to school safety. So it very much leaned into the pandemic issues and how we advocate for getting resources to our staff and our students during these trying times. Our second priority was in behavioral supports and social emotional learning, ensuring that we are focusing on the whole child and getting those services to students when we think of mental health and connectivity with each other. That's certainly a major priority. And then the last one is our special education programs, who are a major priority for Mercer Island School District. We're currently undertaking inclusionary practices and universal design for learning. It's a program that President Lurie and Superintendent Koloski have been working on for over a year with Katie Novak is the Educational Services District and the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. So we continue to lean into that. And we have refocused our priorities pre pandemic through our mission, values and vision in Mercer Island to focus on the whole child and placing students as a priority. I think that's really served our district well through this pandemic because it said, no matter what decision we make, our why is our students and making sure that every choice we make serves our students first and foremost. And so when it comes to public health, when it comes to educational resources and access, that's been really important. I also serve in the Federal Relations Network, which we continue to focus on infrastructure of accessibility, digital accessibility, that includes infrastructure in digital access and technology for all students. We realize that it's no longer a luxury to have a computer and access to high speed internet. It's required for education and it's required to be able to function. And so we continue to advocate not only at a state level for that infrastructure, but also at a national level. And then the big thing we're focusing on right now is our ESSER funds. That is the Elementary and Second School Emergency Relief Fund. We're coming into ESSER two funds shortly and how that money will be spent as we continue to look at our budgets. The rest of our day today, much of it's going to be spent in projecting and forecasting our budgets for the next year and how we will have to face the shortcomings in our budgets, just as the state is facing a $4.5 billion shortfall over the next four years. So as you can imagine, there's a lot happening on the legislative front. And our legislature is currently in their long session. Representative Cliburn, you certainly understand what this must be like. And the legislature is fully virtual this year as well. I saved my one big positive towards this report. If there's one positive that I felt this year, it's that this has brought us together virtually. I'm speaking on a regular basis with colleagues from across the state and the nation. President Lurie and I meet weekly with our Eastside King County cohorts as we discuss what's happening in our districts. And virtual legislative session is going to allow students and constituents from across the state to virtually zoom into Olympia to provide testimony and weigh in in this really crucial and pivotal point of legislation. So I think that's a huge positive and something that I hope will stick after pandemic, that we continue to have a voice in Olympia, whether we can be there in person or not. So I think that covers it. Happy to answer any questions.
Still on mute. See, I do it all the time. That's why I stay on, stay off mute sometimes, just when I know I'm going to be interjecting. Does anyone have any questions or comments about anything that we've discussed today so far? So it's 9:20. I can ask Fred and Donna, is there anything that you want to talk about with regards to the Inclusionary Practices Group? Or the Equity and Inclusion, the Superintendent's Equity Advisory? And any of those things that have been happening this year?
Sure, we could talk a little bit about, again, related to what Brian mentioned with our values, vision and mission statement. I think it's also important to note that the board has been working on the fundamentals as well and that we've adjusted those to also be aligned with the values, vision and mission statement. And I think they're clear and really do have equity inclusion as as kind of the plate that everything else is 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 built upon. And so we have several groups that are focused on that equity work. We do have a Superintendent Equity Advisory that has was started as a Superintendent Diversity Council, I believe, prior to my coming here. And we adjusted it a little bit and really focused on equity and that individual journey that everyone needs to take when you when you talk about really creating a space for everyone to be in when you when you're talking about anti racism work. And so we've been engaged in that for for several years now and it's expanded. And and our real goal, of course, is to have it be systemic throughout our entire K-12 system, which means we're looking at everything through that lens. So an example being, just yesterday, I was asked to sign an instructional materials adoption document. And a big section of that talks about, does this new textbook, it was happened to be for environmental science, but it still asks those same questions of equity and is it inclusive? And are the the any of the portrayal of incidents or concepts within that? Are are they accessible to all? And so those are things that we have to pay attention to for all of our students. Fred, why don't you talk a little bit about some of the work that we've has really ramped up this year as initiated by our students, particularly at the high school?
Yeah, it's been a really, I think, going back to the moments last spring and and early summer in our country as as we reached a critical point of the death of George Floyd in the in the presence and and then and then the cause of police officers and that being kind of a culminating moment of so many others that had come before. And sadly, those that have come since. But the Black Lives Matters March that was held in June was almost entirely orchestrated and and organized by some of our students. Those students then had gone on to meet with city council to communicate with our or to communicate with city council, communicate with our school board, meet with Superintendent Koloski and myself and really lay out some expectations and or demands around what they would like to see in the community and certainly in their schools. And so we've had a number of different student groups at the high school working on various aspects of social justice. And they really came together over the summer and they formed an alliance called SCORE, Student Groups on Race Relations. Simultaneously, down at the middle school, a group formed called JUST. And those two groups have actually now started partnering together. And they're working on some very intentional ways that they can promote a week of action for the Black Lives Matters Week, the first week of February. We've also invited those students to join some of the faculty or or staff groups that have formed as well. So that we're adding student voice, but it really all goes back to, you know, this isn't necessarily about diversity and this isn't just about inclusion. This is really moving the needle down towards equity. And that if we are creating more equitable school settings, if we are breaking down barriers in our schools and in our community, if we are making sure that we are truly leading with a racial equity lens and an anti bias, anti racist system, then the diversity really takes care of itself and that you're not working on diversity. And the inclusion pieces come about because of belief systems that change around equity. So we're really working on that, those belief systems and those structures that have been inherent in public education for a very long time, whether or not it was the exclusion of students with disabilities and or outcomes for some students that were predetermined based on race and ethnicity, but really looking at those systemically in our school district as well as with our partners across the region. So I think there's an exciting moment here in our school district that that we'll be able to continue to move forward and and make this a a school district that all students can come to and succeed in and feel welcome. And also that we can then attract candidates near and far who represent different races and ethnicities other than the predominant one, which is white faculty members and administrators and staff. And and how can we then start attracting others? So we've got multiple angles working on this and we appreciate our PTA who has created positions in their leadership around this at the school sites, different components. We know that the city council is working on some initiatives as well. And we know that this is about the community, not about one organization. So it's an exciting time for all of us to continue to think about making sure that that all really means all.
Remember to unmute. Thank you so much for sharing that. Does anyone have any questions on what was just presented? Okay, so Lori, it looks like she is willing to share what chamber members are doing with working with students in our district. So Lori, take it away.
Thanks. I didn't do it in my introduction and I did want to take just a few minutes. I know we're trying to wrap it up and brag a little bit about a lot of our businesses on Mercer Island and a little bit about the chamber and how we work with students. So I'm just going to kind of tell you some stuff that you may not know about. It won't take very long, but this year, meaning I don't even know if I mean from January 2020 till now or a year and a half. We we've worked with students, the chamber specifically, in the leadership group of the We Love MI campaign, which I don't know if you all know, but it raised approximately $250,000 for our businesses and nonprofits. And the International Entrepreneurial Class at the Mercer Island High School was pivotal in putting that whole program together. So that was amazing. We continue to provide a DECA scholarship to a We continue to provide a DECA scholarship to a senior that graduated in 2020 from Mercer High School. Our chamber members help us raise money for that. It was Ara Manhas, who is in the Foster Business School at the University of Washington. So that was really exciting, even though it was virtual, we were able to do it. We, I also was able to have a summer intern from Mercer Island High School this year, who helped me with my social media and some branding. And geniously, she moved all of our documents from my hard drive to a Google Drive. So we are actually now operating under the 21st century type operation. So that was amazing. Just recently, where our office used to be in town center, we moved to a different space and our old space was boarded up. And I was able to help work with a local artist who had former Mercer Island High School artists, students come and paint that mural. And then I want to just share with you all the different businesses that I know off the top of my head that employ Mercer Island students and work with Mercer Island students. So I'm just going to name them because they're amazing. I want you to all recognize them. Is San O Cafe, Mercer Island Athletic Club, Island Treats, Mia Posto, QFC, Starbucks, Sahara Pizza, The Boutique Lounge, Mercer Island Shore Club, Mercer Island Beach Club, Mercer Island Country Club. And I'm sure there's some that I'm missing. I didn't have a chance to go out to every single business and ask them. But those are all businesses that really make a point of bringing in students, Mercer Island District students, to work or intern in their spaces of business. And I think that I just wanted to share that with you. So you all are really well, well aware that our business community is supportive and really wants to be part of the Mercer School District in, in ways that they are able. So thank you. I appreciate that little bit of time to toot their horn.
Thank you so much for sharing that. And that, thank you for bringing up what our entrepreneurial students were working on last spring because it seems like a lifetime ago. So that was just within the last year. So thank you so much. They worked really hard and we, we recognized them at the time during a board meeting. But, but the work that they did in supporting our community was amazing. So thank you because that, that support goes two ways and we really appreciate everything that our community members do.
Well, and your, your teacher Jen McClellan was instrumental as well. So she should get credit for that too.
She does and has and will continue because she is amazing. And it is smack dab 9:30 on the nose. I want to respect everyone's time. The board has more work to do today and I'm sure you each have other things to do, unless there's any last second questions or things that you want to add. Thank you so much for joining us. I know one of the, one of the great parts of this linkage is, is the opportunity to interact on a more individual basis at the conclusion. Unfortunately, we can't do that this year, but we will look forward to seeing you again next year and out and about. So thank you so much, everyone, for your dedication to our students.
It's great seeing everyone. Miss you all. Bye.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks for including Rotary.
Thank you. President Lori, the agenda does show the study session as starting at 10:00 AM, which allows the board to take a bit of a bio break. And would you like to come back at?
Yes, I was actually going to ask that next because I noticed that the study session says 10 to 2. Is that?
I, I don't think we're going to need that much time.
Okay.
So we, that's generally the time that we have allocated during this annual study session. But also in this Zoom round, we know that it's very trying to be on Zoom for that long of a time. So I really don't think we'll need till 2:00. I would anticipate with the two topics we have, perhaps noon, maybe two hours. But I know that 90 minutes, people start to glaze over a little bit. We'll have to watch the time and make sure that we do sufficient breaks in there as well.
Yes, absolutely. I'm going to have to drive my mother to a doctor's appointment leaving at noon. So I can still be listening, but I'll be driving. Sorry about that.
That gives us a great target timeline.
Yes, it does. So all right. So it is 9:33. We will be at recess until 10:00 AM. We will rejoin the study session. So see you all soon.
Thank you.
Catching up on my love letters.
Brian, we might have time to discuss what questions? And Reeves, are you there?
I see that we are recording still. Are we intending to record a study session? Just asking a question.
Donna, I'm sorry. I am here. I'm happy to do whatever you need.
I'm not sure if we need to record. We do have a slide deck, President Lurie. So I was checking with And Reeves to make sure that Fred would be able to screen share, to share the slide deck, and we will post the slide deck to Board Docs. We were still working on it yesterday, so we can certainly post it as an information piece. There's no action being taken, so.
Okay, I will stop the recording and then make sure Fred has the ability to share.
Is that, I mean, that's been our norm to not record. So just want to make sure we're all on the same page due to our, yes, okay.
Hi, would it be easier for you to screen share if you're going through it there? Would that be easier? So you're not telling me when to go forward?
I'll be doing most of the presentation.
Okay.
Just calling on specific, so.